Thank you. So, the first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. Would you all please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a few things to accomplish tonight. First item, under acceptance of the agenda, because we are talking about the fixed assessment application, and we have a quorum of the Economic Development Commission here, the chairman, Ellen Gild, along with Greg Piatza and Tim Roy are here. We are going to, I'll ask if we could move the resolution for the Emergency Management Performance Grant from number seven to number 12. That way, we can keep the business first, and then, once we are finished with that, EDC may choose to leave, because that's their purpose for being here tonight. So, with that, that one change, there's no additions, I'd entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda.
Motion.
Second by Kathy, motion made by Michael, second by Kathy. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is approval of minutes from January 18, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
Aye.
Made by Michael, is there a, second by Fred? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item, under communications and correspondence, as many of you may have read or seen on, in the media, we had a very serious situation last night at Tri-Town supermarket. And we, fortunately, things worked out very well, in terms of people's well-being. But, I wanted to call attention to some exemplary behavior and actions on the part of our police department. And I've asked members of our department to come here tonight. Last night was a very different night than tonight. There was a very serious situation at Tri-Town, where there was an armed incident, and our police force was able to, with the help of citizens, respond immediately, and the person, the armed person, as he exited the store, was apprehended by our lieutenant, Malardo. And Officer Liscio was in the front of the building, and they were able to get the situation under control. There was one arrest made, and fortunately, no one was hurt. But, I wanted to read a commendation letter, and I'll ask the police if they could just come forward toward the microphone. It's addressed to Lieutenant Malardo. On behalf of the town of Portland, I commend you, Lieutenant Malardo, Officer Paul Liscio, Officer First Class James Capello, Officer First Class Daniel Knapp, Sergeant James Kelly, and Sergeant Scott Cunningham, for your actions which resulted in the apprehension of a male suspect responsible for an armed robbery at a local business establishment on the evening of January 31, 2017. As a result of your concerted actions with the Middletown Police Department, the East Hampton Police Department, and the Connecticut State Police, you not only averted possible disaster for the suspect, but you also safeguarded the police personnel. As a Portland resident, allow me to express the appreciation and respect rendered for the demanding work that is accomplished to ensure our town's safety. Your swift and professional actions resulted in an excellent job while handling the challenging and emotionally intensive task. Please accept my sincere thanks on the terrific response to this emergency. We are most grateful on your very outstanding job. And it's signed by me, Susan Bransfield, and I know that our whole Board of Selectmen and the whole town are very grateful to you and grateful to God that things happened the way they did. Lieutenant?
On behalf of the police department, I want to thank the Board, Susan, for recognizing our department for last night's incident. I'll tell you, retirement never looked so good.
Not at all.
But, anyway, I want to really thank our department. Our guys came together as a team. They did a great job, I'll tell you. They came together, everybody responded, they showed up, they did what they needed to do. And I want to thank East Hampton PD for sending guys down, I want to thank the state, and I want to especially thank Middletown PD. Probably within five minutes of the incident, Middletown had 20 to 30 guys there. Everybody worked together as a team, which we were able to apprehend someone who was wanted for an armed robbery. And, yeah, everything went down, no one got hurt, and I, again, can't say enough about our department. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, Lieutenant. All right, thank you.
The town will also be sending letters to the police departments of East Hampton and Middletown, and it's a thank you letter to them for their quick assistance to the Portland Police Department and their professional actions, as Lieutenant Malardo said, Middletown in particular, in fact that we share the dispatch center. They were able to respond and really help give appropriate backup to our police, as well as East Hampton Police, who also sent officers and the state police. So, things, as Ron said, as we talked today, it sort of went as a textbook, but we all know these things don't always go that way. So, we're very grateful for their professionalism and for the grace of God that things went well. Also, under communications, in your packets, Selectmen, there are things that I wanted to call your attention to that will be on a future agenda. There was a letter from Donald Snyder in regard to a reimbursement request, so I'll put that on next Times Agenda at the end of February. And we also had a request, actually, from the Portland Housing Authority for some reimbursement for a water break that we will talk about. I'd sent this to you quite a few weeks ago, but I thought it would be appropriate now that you've had a chance to review it, that we'll put it on a future agenda. I had another item that I wanted to bring your attention to, which I believe is in your packets. This, did you get one of these? If you didn't, I'll pass it. Yes, you did. This is the renovation work that will be conducted this spring at Quarry Heights. They received a $2 million grant for new siding, new paving, and some new ridge vents and other upgrades to that apartment complex, and I think it's going to be a huge transformation and a big facelift. So, we'll look forward to seeing that, and congratulations to them for the award of the $2 million grant. And, I think that's all I had under communications at this point. The next item is, let me just double, yes, that's it, public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Okay. If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is the 2017 fixed assessment application, the BRT DeMarco LLC. And as I pointed out earlier, we do have three members of EDC attending, and since they are a quorum, we have to notice it as a meeting of theirs. So, it is noticed, and I'll ask Ellen if you had anything to say.
And I do, as usual. And it's a privilege to sit on this side of the desk with my colleagues. The EDC has been working feverishly, I would say, to arrive at this juncture, and it is a juncture. And hopefully, if not a final iteration, then close to a final iteration, on some decision-making that's, in our mind, very, very significant to the town of Portland. And it deals with what I think everyone here is well aware, and that is the final development and understanding of this application for what people are often referring to as tax abatement, it's, you can call it fixed tax assessment, I like to call it tax deferral, you can choose your term, but it's significant, and has received a tremendous amount of attention from all parties. And so, I think, in working with Susan and arranging for this joint session, and I really appreciate that response to our request, I'd like to try to frame what I think is of real It's been almost three years as this development question has progressed. And it was only because of townspeople like you that there was a beginning at all. The formation of a small group of people that ultimately were able to be successful in bringing funds to the town, to assist in looking at a dilemma. A derelict property of incredible value, as everyone agrees, that ultimately became what we all commonly refer to as a VCI report. But, the report is not just a study that was done by a fanciful contractor or high-powered That study and its findings belong to you. There were three townwide workshops and a number of follow-up hearings with planning and zoning and with the EDC that bring us here. And throughout this process, there's been tremendous amounts of publicity, thanks to our news people, our reporters. And it's been controversial and somewhat disturbing at times. And so, I want to speak not just for myself, but for my colleagues at EDC. We truly are grateful to this board in particular, and to you as well, for in this entire process doing diligence and requiring us to examine every stone in the path. And I'd like to think that we're pretty close to having completed that task. Some folks think that, I'm a sworn enemy of my colleague down here, Ben Serb.
Far from it.
And he's a brother. Truly. He knows my family as well as I do. And we grew up in the same part of this wonderful town, and have the exact same passion for the exact same outcome. His approach to looking at things is a bit different than mine, as is Kitchus. And where's Brian? There's Brian. There's my other neighbor.
I don't like much.
What I'm trying to do is to say thank you, and I'm absolutely sincere in that. And some of you truly know that, because we see each other outside of this chamber, and we're pretty candid. We're really doing our very best, in a passionate way, a very passionate way, to make sure that we represent the best interests of the townspeople. And it isn't for today. I think we're all agreed that it's for, as our Native Americans would like to think, for seven generations. That may be a stretch, but I'll use it. Once the gas station's on the corner, it's pretty hard to remove. I think you get the point. We want to get this right. We've all endeavored to make it as right as possible. And so, what we're trying to do tonight, and I'd like, and I'm going to provoke discussion, discussion, and by the way, I'm going to chair this, this part of the session, so if you'd like to be recognized, I'll certainly, I'll try to make sure everybody has time. But, my objective, at least, and I hope it's yours as well, is to, let's flesh out any remaining issues that need clarity, or need perfection, or need revision. But, let's finish this. And in the end, and I think each and every one of you has a draft resolution before you, my objective is, once we've satisfied, each and every one of us, that the discussion is complete, I'd like to entertain a motion as to an approval of that resolution. And what it's saying is, we've come this far, let's finish it. The resolution basically says, if we're in agreement, that we all have an understanding that we can support, just an understanding we can support. Can we take this to the final step and have the professionals who can draft something into an agreement that has teeth, legal status, that satisfies any of the concerns that have been raised? Can we move forward, at least, to bring that back to the Board for a yes/no vote, when you have all the i's dotted and all the t's crossed, and something that you can absolutely criticize, not hypothesize, but criticize? I'd like to see us get to a point where not only can we agree with this resolution to take that step, but I'd like to think that every one of us is going to vote yes, every one of us. Anyway, I think as a, as a starting point, or at least as an agenda for me to manage this, each of you, we all have a copy of the draft of this fixed tax assessment. And this is just that, a draft, obviously. It is not anything that has any legal consequence, so it's not been polished into that kind of a document. But, I do think it is structurally the fundamental elements that you would expect to see in an actionable contract or agreement with a developer. And so, I don't know, let's just start with number one. There are five major elements, components to this. And what EDC has been trying to establish is an understanding that this is not something that provides a tax-free ride for the developer. Taxes will continue to be paid, and those taxes will be increasing. They will not be measured against the improvements to the property, but they will be to an improved or higher value of the land that those improvements are on. And there have been some projections as to what that represents. We might argue with that or not, but I'd like to hear what kind of comments I can get from the Board.
I'll, if you don't mind, I'll start. Before we get into the taxes, I do have a lot to talk about on that. I'd like to put back on the record, like I did in the previous meeting, I'm a minority owner in an LLC that received a tax abatement in the town of Portland. You're all familiar with the Chris Cody Gulf Building. There used to be a residence on that property that had the right to put children in the school system. I'm a minority owner in that LLC. We did not, as the owners of the LLC, didn't receive any of the abatement, it went to the tenant. It was a pass-through, it happened after the building was up. That was the rules, the building had to be built, the assessor had to then value it, and we had to then agree to the value and agree to not appeal the value in order to get the abatement. So, to give you guys an idea, it was a single-family home that paid approximately $4,000 a year in taxes. We agreed to remove the home, agree in the abatement to not have a residential use on the property. We had to agree to that. The taxes were a 50% deferment for three years, which then, so during the three-year period, the taxes went up to approximately $7,000 a year, and then after the three-year period, they're over $10,000, and I haven't checked lately, they could be even much higher than that. Once again, I don't pay the taxes, so it didn't make a difference, but the point is, that abatement did not burden the town. I want to make sure everybody fully comprehends what that abatement was. Had 99 other people done that style abatement, the town of Portland would have approximately $600,000 a year in new money without children in the school system, and they would have removed 100 or 99 more residential units, lessening the burden on our town. That was a good thing for the town of Portland. So, I wanted to make sure everybody fully comprehends. And the other tax abatement that has occurred was the medical marijuana facility under the bridge. They met the criteria for it, and they also received one. Once again, two things to remember on those two recent abatements. They didn't affect any other business, and they were not residential. It's very, you need to have abatements that are good for the community. And I want to make sure everybody fully, if anybody has any questions on that abatement, I'd be more, more, I'd be happy to answer. But, back to the taxes. My first question is, obviously, we just went through a revale, everybody just got their tax. What, do you know the change in Elm Chris?
I do not.
Susan, do you know the change in Elm Chris?
Um, let me see.
Because the, approximately $94,000 a year that they were paying
Correct.
was, we settled that in court, correct? We came to that dollar amount, not based on what we thought, but it was based on agreement in court, correct?
Well, first off, the grants list was completed, and it went up 1.22%, and I do have the top 10 taxpayers. And on the 2015 grant list, Perry Portland Associates was $2,462,980 on the grant list. In the 2016 grant list, Perry Portland Associates, which I, whatever that LLC owns is what we're looking at, it's a good ballpark. So, it went from 2.462,980 to 2.492,070, about a $30,000 increase. And they are ranked in 2015 as number five taxpayer, and in 2016's grant list, they are ranked number six. To give you perspective, the number one taxpayer is Connecticut Light and Power. Number two is St. Clement's Foundation. Number three is Jarvis Airfoil, and that was the same for both grand lists. Number four, Buckeye Cattle Company. Number five, for the 2016, is Woodgreen, which is actually the Tri-Town Plaza. And Perry Portland Associates was number five in 2015. Number six in the new grand list is Perry Portland. Number six last year was Portland Care and Rehab on Main Street. Number seven this year, 2016, was Portland Care and Rehab. Safety Clean was in 2015. Safety Clean was eight this year. Eight last year was Woodgreen. Oakwood Sports Center of Glastonbury is number nine. Last year, they were number 10. And Caro Properties LLC, which is under, sort of under the bridge, it's the lighting warehouse, that's number 10. And last year, Quandalcan Pharmaceuticals was on the top 10. This year, they're off.
Back to the value, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Back to the values.
So, the value went up $30,000.
Yeah, I think the true value hard work story, I think, went up more than that, to give you an idea. And I'm not sure the new assessment, in offices, the foundation that's still in the garage for the old Borlini's, or the payment's still around, the foundation's still there, and I didn't see that on the assessor's cards. Back to my point, we originally had this value much higher. We took it to court, we came up with a settlement of about $2.4 million in value, and here, you know, we just went through a revale, and they were telling everybody that the commercial values went up, at least.
What's the point, sir?
The point is, it didn't. It's, it's essentially $2.4 million, if you change $30,000, it's pretty much stayed the same, when there are many other commercials paying their fair share. So, right off the bat, I find it hard to believe that the value of that site only changed $30,000.
Well, is that the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen, or the EDC, or how does that relate to the?
Well, I'm trying to put it, I'm trying to put it on the record that, here we are, we had a much higher value as a town. It then went to court. The agreement was to put it at that. So, this, back to, back to the tax payment, the reason that I'm bringing it all up.
Please.
For example, the other two tax payments in the town, a dollar was picked after it was built, not before. You knew what you were getting, you can put a dollar, you know what it is, and the person can then agree to it or not. And in the other case, they said you can't appeal the value. They take away your right, so in other words, the town picks the number of what it's worth. So, what I'm pointing out is, what we keep talking about, what is the new value going to be of the land? You spoke earlier on, they're still going to pay their fair share on the value of the land, and it's going to increase. I'm going to ask, what's the increase? We're going to need to know that to make any decision. And we need to then make sure, if there is an abatement in the future, everybody's on board to agree to that value and the same terms as we've done in the past, not to appeal that value.
Does anyone want to follow up on that?
If I could, just so that everybody is familiar with what we're talking about, Ben, only the value of the, this, I'm reading from number one on the draft, that only the value for improvements to the property would be subject to the fixed assessment. The land assessment is not fixed for this particular project. Because land value is likely to increase by virtue of the improvements overall, taxes are anticipated to increase in relation to the assessment for the entire land property. And I can tell you, in discussions with both our assessor's office and the developer of the property, the range would be anywhere from a 50% increase in the value of the land and up. But, the value would be set once the site plan is approved for the project. Now, there's other projects of this nature, there's other ways of estimating, and that is something that our assessor's office is reviewing with other towns to see how that, how that would work. In terms of the actual agreement, as I think Ellen pointed out, and as you're pointing out too, Ben, the actual agreement is not in front of you, because that has to be legally vetted, and has to be put in a fashion that would be protective of the town, accountable to the town, as well as holding accountability for the developer for many of the aspects associated, excuse me, with any abatement. So, I'm agreeing with you that that is something that would need to be worked into the actual legal agreement, which we don't have in front of us.
I would argue it needs to be worked into the draft. We need to know everything we're discussing.
How can you?
We didn't.
We don't have our attorney here for all of the legal requirements. Is that what you're referring to?
In the past, we've done two tax abatements, correct?
In the past, as, as I recall, and you weren't on the Board at the time, just to clarify. The applications came in front of this Board. The applications were approved by this Board. And I can remember one Selectman saying to me, I said, "Well, now the application is approved, do you want me to bring back?" And I fully intended to bring back the completed agreement, and he said, "No, you don't need to." But, it's available, everyone can look at it, I, I think I did share it with the selectmen, they chose not to vote on it per se, but they approved an application. So a lot of that legal material and important items were not included in the application. You have in front of you really an application. The draft is, is notes, but the application is also in front of you, and the application from BRT, I think reflects pretty much what's in this draft as well.
Yeah, so if we have an, an application in front of us, I think we owe it to everybody to know exactly what the, how the potential net gain is going to be to the town of Portland, or what the potential loss is.
If you're, if you're referring to the last application, though, this board didn't know every single detail that was going to be in the agreement, just to clarify for you. They didn't have that.
Right down to the penny, you, you made the LLC stand up and agree to the exact dollar.
In the agree, in the, in the agreement, yes.
Yeah, in the application.
I don't remember that it was the application.
You can go back and watch the work.
Tom, do you remember?
It's not possible, because you don't know the numbers, you don't know, you don't, you don't have the whole-
One at a time, please.
Those are on, one, those are much smaller scale, I think. But in this here, you have a, a very phased plan, in the two, two different phases, because I know that was something that people wanted. There was two phases, where the, the language was noted that there was an amount that the, that the developer was putting in as an amount. That language was removed, just pretty much stated that it's whatever was determined by the assessor, which is in a positive scenario for the town. So the, the assessor needs to be able to obtain the documentation approved from the subsequent board to come up with a rate, just like on the other ones, it's, the building occurred, and then the final agreement occurred. The, the actual outline was there on those, but there's the agreement. This is just a little bit different, because you're talking about, over the seven years, there's a step approach.
What I'm getting at is, are we going to have the same language that once the value's picked by the town of Portland, it's going to be not appealable?
What value is being picked?
The assessor's going to pick the value at the end of any project.
Right.
Set the value on this, and we're basing an abatement on that value. What I'm getting at is, I want to make sure we have proper tools in place to protect the town.
And what would you suggest, just as one?
Without a doubt, the town has to be able to pick the value, and it has to be not appealable.
Aren't we doing that with the tax assessor?
No, no, because you have to get him to agree to never appeal what we say.
Oh, that, now, that's new language, to never appeal.
No, that, no, 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 that's what it's in the old agreement that the town's already used.
Yeah, that was a pretty standard agreement, I think.
Right, so what I'm getting at is-
Okay, that's a request that you have.
Is that, well, we need to, before we make a, you know, let's face it, this is a very large project for a very small community. You need to know the numbers. We all need to know what the potential impact to this community is going to be, and I think we need to do our due diligence. That's why we're up here tonight.
Right.
That's why we're talking about it, we're trying to figure out what works and what doesn't. And I think, at the very least, you need the same language, that once the value is picked, they can't appeal it. That changes everything.
Okay, fine, let's, let's go with that. Can I get some more comment on that first issue?
Yeah, I, I had a question, just for clarification, if it's, Susan's recalling, you know, the board recently directed for select persons to do the negotiations, as I recall, this discussion about whether other selecting would be involved, and it was determined at that meeting that they did not. So what we have before us is what she was directed to do, I think, by the selectmen. And from what I hear, whatever action is taken tonight, is not a final action that you're asking for. And again, the final action, where all those details would be looked at, would be subject to a vote by the board, so I don't, I don't quite see what, what the hangup is myself.
Because any one of those detail-
The one that's guidance, that's, thank you. I mean, let me just interject here, your point's well taken, and I think it's, it's a perfect response to, to your need, and that is, let's get the clarity that we need, and that's what we're driving with it. So, your, your comment's been noted, and I can assure you that that would be part of the, the work that our attorneys would be engaged with.
And seeing that Fred brought, brought it up, if I may respond to, you know, when we gave Susan the ability to negotiate a deal, I was under the impression she was going to be coming back to this board with whatever she could start with, and we would have input as a board. At no point did I ever think she was going to negotiate, come up with some language that she felt comfortable with, go to the newspaper prior to the rest of the board, and then we sit here tonight. That's not what I ever anticipated. What I anticipated was, she was going to go work on a deal. And keep in mind, we gave that ability after she came in here and showed us a proposed policy change that severely limited the dollar amount that the town of Portland would be able to give out in the future. I believe it was narrowing it from a seven-year down to approximately a five, with a sliding scale during that five of an 80, 60, 40, 20% over the years. So this is what we're presented, presented with prior to giving permission to then go negotiate a tax deal. It showed us, I thought, that her position was going to be, well, clearly, seven years is too much, in any case. She wants to amend the policy with what she's, in one of the emails, her draft, her changes. So I knew where she was coming from when we gave her permission to negotiate and come back, but it never came back. Now we're all up here together, this is the comeback, just so you, so everybody's fully aware.
Let me point out that I did present to this board way before I was given any indication that you wanted me to go back to BRT, and had suggested that you may want to revisit the policy. And at the same time, for the tax assessment of policy, I asked not only this board, but I also asked the EDC to review that policy. This board, and I can specifically remember one member saying, "I think our policy is fine the way it is. I don't want to see any changes." And I was fine with that, as were the other selectmen, because there was no motion made to proceed with any changes in our fixed assessment policy. Then the Economic Development Commission looked at it, and as I remember reading a letter from them, while they appreciated some of the ideas that I had put in a draft format, they did not agree with that policy either, and they thought that if there was going to be any change, that we'd be more careful about how we look at a policy, and then make any changes necessary.
That's right.
So I just want to make sure that the record is straight and not revised. In terms of the negotiating, the talking with Mr. Bertram, he said, "Look, it's, it's out there, I want to share whatever we have, I want to make sure that there's transparency here, it's things that we want to proceed with." And in terms of the tax abatement schedule, which is number five in your blue paper, I did present to him different numbers to begin with, as you would in any going back and forth with people, and this was the, the best that we both came up with. So, in terms of negotiating, I had also asked every member of this selectmen's board to sit with me and Mr. Bertram, and I was directed to conduct it on my own. And I specifically asked you, Ben, to help me on the Monday before we had a meeting here, and you said that you would. And then, when we met, there was, I think, a change of mind by this board, and they didn't want to assist. So, there's no intention to not let the public, who is very invested in this application, as well as this board. I'm open to your suggestions tonight, as I was previously, and I think that makes for a better product if we all discuss it.
Yeah, I, I have a copy of the tax abatement that you proposed, and I have a copy of the, the letter from the-
EDC?
EDC. And it's specifically, the commission feels that the amendment to the tax payment policy must, and it gave some bullet points. They wanted to change it. They never said they didn't. The result of this study led to a unanimous agreement that the draft amendment of the town's tax abatement policy deserves further develop-
Needs further development.
Yeah, they want, they want, so I want to be clear for the record, that, the economic, you're, you're my way. The Economic Development Commission does want to further work on the, work on the policy.
Yes.
And I never thought you were afraid to go to the public. You went to the public before coming back to, you're on the board.
Well, if you look at the agenda, we did, as you asked me, and I agree, we should revisit the policy on fixed real property assessments, just as we revisit any policy. And I agree with you.
Let me intervene here. Let's be constructive. I, I don't see how this is leading to any, any constructive outcome. Let, let, let me hear from the rest of the board here, please. Anyone else want to comment on, on this first issue? It seems to me, Ben, that, that we're not, we're not staying with the factual issues here.
Well, I just wanted to be clear.
You're speaking to process, and, and process is not on the agenda.
Well, I, I just wanted to be clear, when we gave Susan the ability to negotiate a fair deal for the selectmen, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board members, but I was under the impression it was going to come back, and there was going to be back and forth. And it was right after a tax abatement program policy change was presented to us that said years one, two, and three, 100%, years four, 80%, years five, 60%, years six, 40%, and year seven, 20%. That is what we now saw Susan's position, and we then gave her the ability to negotiate. At least that was my take on it.
No, no.
I want to, if I could, I'm going to clarify that the policy is as it stands that this board approved in June of 2016. And on the topic, I don't have any other comments, I've said what I wanted to say, so I'm not going to say any more.
Same.
Again, I invite anyone else to follow up on this. Okay. Then I'm going to move on to item number two, and let's, it speaks to the renovation of two of the historic properties on, on that campus. And that, in fact, is one of the underpinnings of the applicant's request for a tax abatement, was that the, the cost of incorporating those structures into this development plan added to, to the cost burden, and a tax abatement would reflect that fact and, and provide him a, a greater ability to, to finance the project. At the same time, initially, and this, this speaks to negotiation again, because I was part of this, the requirement that was built into the tax amendment that allows for this kind of mixed use to take place with, with a higher level of residential housing than would have normally been approved, was dependent on the incorporation of those historic properties. And that became a buying point, and you've all witnessed that back and forth. The negotiated outcome of that is what you see here, where the developer's going to take on the full restoration and use of two of the structures, and the third will be put into private ownership, in this case with a nonprofit, on land that the developer is providing. And you're, I think you're all familiar with that site that's on the southwest corner. This would be incorporated into an agreement that would be drawn up for your final overview and approval. And I, I don't know if that's, if that is something that needs further clarification or not. Catch, please.
So the, the only question I have in regard to item number two is the, I guess, how structurally sound of the Brainerd Sage houses are? And can, can, has any study been done as to the ability to renovate them and still maintain a usable structure?
I can't speak specifically to it, but people have spoken with, with me that are knowledgeable, and the answer in all cases is yes, 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 and yes. You can move it, it's structurally restorable, there, there's great interest in-
I understand the interest.
Thinking that on. And it's not the town's burden.
Okay, so, so the other piece of that is the, the abatement, some part of the abatement hinges on the restoration of the two homes. If for some reason during the process, one or both of the homes were to crumble, I mean, we're looking at, what, 11 years with no attention at all? Please understand, I, I appreciate the historical nature, I live in a historical home, but I also know what surrounds them, dust mainly. But, I, I, so, let's just say, the work begins on the Brainerd or the Sage, either one, and the house suddenly becomes unable to be rehabilitated or reused in a fashion, then where do we stand?
First off, the buildings are protected outside of our consideration here for the development. Individually, they are listed on the National Register, the state has a law that does instruct the owners to maintain and protect them, okay? To your point, though, you're saying-
But that been done, I think, I guess, one of the questions.
Okay, well, stabilization would certainly be part of that. So if, if you would, it would be more comfortable to say that something more specific in this agreement, then I think we could do so. And I would, I would beg the question and ask you for what kind of language you think would suffice.
So maybe the reuse, I guess I would want to know how many people could occupy the building at any given time, those kinds of things. What, what actually could take place in either of the buildings?
What their use would be?
Right, so, so, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
What the use and total population, you know, for an, an event or anything else, for anything that might fall under the reuse.
Perfectly reasonable. But I don't know if that answers your other concern-
It doesn't.
And that was about the, the stability and the viability of the, the structures themselves.
I have a comment.
Sure.
I know that Dan Bertram has gone in the Brainerd House and reviewed it recently, and his statement is, "It is beautiful." He thinks the house can be renovated. His intention is to have it as the amenity building for the apartments. The Sage House, as he says in his application, he will take off the rear additions, and he felt that's in decent shape. The upstairs does have some of the HVAC that was put in there, not in the best way, and he's not certain of the level of that in terms of the interior. He feels that the exterior of that building can be renovated, but the interior wouldn't be as well preserved as the Brainerd House is by virtue of the nature as it stands. And, in order to get the density of the apartments, there has to be the renovation of the homes. So I'm agreeing with you as well, that he, the developer, in order to sign something, has to be certain that those buildings can be renovated in place, and that's what he stated in the application, in place. And I think, an answer to your question, in terms of the level of the renovation, the numbers of either apartments or the square footage that would be usable space, should be a part of the agreement.
So linked to, linked to the houses?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that makes me feel a little bit better about that part. So when you say that Dan went through the Brainerd and, and the Sage, and, and did he look at it with a contractor's eye or, or a restoration eye?
I'm not certain who was with him, I was, I did not go with him.
I, I think I can respond to that. I'd like to call on Alan, would you mind speaking to that for me, please?
Alan McKittrick. Yeah. Alan McKittrick, 235 Middle Hattam Road, I'm an architect, and I did go through the Brainerd House with some others and Dan recently, and the Hart Jarvis House, I've been through that twice, actually. I have not been recently in the Sage House. But, when I was last in the Sage House, I can say it was in, actually, pretty stable and good condition, so I'm, I'm less concerned about that. My biggest concern was Hart Jarvis, and I was actually very pleasantly surprised to see a limited amount of deterioration since I had last gone in a couple of years ago. I was very pleasantly surprised, I was expecting to see something much worse. Went through also with a contractor who specializes in moving structures, and he, and to use his words, it's a piece of cake to move that building, chimneys and all. He, he thinks it's actually in, in good enough condition where he can, where he could do that. He thinks it's actually in good enough condition where he can, where he could do that. Brainerd house, we all went through, and other than the damage that had been done by the water leaks previously, I didn't see any new significant damage that worried me as an architect. So I think the consensus was for those two buildings that they're in pretty surprisingly good condition.
Anyone else?
Alan, I guess I don't understand your statement earlier that there were protections of these properties, because it seems to me that these properties have been allowed to deteriorate, become dilapidated, and really blight. I don't think that anything has been done by the owner to rectify that situation.
And you are correct.
Yes, and I believe that it is their responsibility. I don't really believe it should be borne by the taxpayers of the town, the owner of property, to maintain their property. And in fact, they have just allowed it, allowed it to become dilapidated, deteriorated, blighted. And it appears to me that the town has done very little to enforce any action on their behalf to keep this, these buildings in any shape. I find it, I find it troubling that we are essentially implementing a policy where we are going to reward people for not maintaining their property, for allowing it to become deteriorated, for allowing it to become dilapidated, for allowing it to become blighted. And essentially, what we are doing is, we are suggesting to other people with property that they own, that the best thing, best avenue for you to take is to allow it to become blighted, and we're going to bail you out at some point, and we're going to allow you to fix this property up, and we're going to give you a tax abatement. And I just don't think that's good policy. I don't think it's appropriate.
And I'm in complete agreement. I don't know how that bears on this issue that we're speaking to, but I agree with what you just said.
Well, I think it bears directly on this. You're talking about these properties and whether they're going to be preserved or not, and here we are. Why would you, why all of a sudden would you have trust that this property is going to be protected by the same landowners who have allowed it to become dilapidated, deteriorated, blighted?
Because their development hinges on the reuse and restoration of those structures. They cannot build the housing that they are applying to develop. That's the way that the text amendment was finally developed.
And there are specifications as to what they're supposed to do to restore these buildings? I haven't seen anything put out there.
Not specifically, no.
If I may.
Well, so not specifically. So here we are with owners who have allowed this to become dilapidated, and we're kind of giving them a free ride. Why wouldn't we force them with specifications to restore these buildings?
I think that's what Kitch was alluding to, is that there should be specificity associated with the amount of square footage and the use of the buildings, and I think that is important, that that be detailed.
Brian, to your point, if I may, you wanted to know what teeth planning and zoning had. They have none. Susan, earlier, just for point of fact, you pointed out that during the planning and zoning process, they're going to be required to renovate. No, they're not. The text amendment specifically says, so we're all clear, preserve. The definition of preserve is basically make sure there's a roof on it and paint it whatever color you want. There is no other teeth in that text amendment, and I pointed that out earlier. So earlier you said they have to renovate. That is not true. That requirement of planning and zoning does not require this developer to renovate anything. Back to your point, Brian, that's what you were asking, what teeth do they have?
Yes, it would seem to me that a vast majority of people in this room who favor this project, they favor this project because of the historic homes and the fact that they want them preserved. And I don't think there's anything, speaking to those people, I don't think there's anything here that's preserving those properties. And you want to rely on the text amendment? Go ahead and find out what happens.
No.
Why don't we rely on the, let's hopefully say, approved final tax abatement agreement? That I'm hoping you will say yes to. And in that agreement, it will say basically what it says here in the draft. The renovation of the Brainerd and Sage house will be completed in place by BRT, and you can put a timeline on it if you'd like to. Barring that, barring that, there's no abatement. They voided the abatement. That's what the language would provide for.
And to repeat what I think Kitch was saying, Brian, there does need to be specificity as to the level of the improvements made to that building, such that it would be amenities. And I would want to see the details of what those amenities would be, as well as what would be in the Sage house and the square footage. If you look at the schematic, the schematic does say that the Hart Jarvis house would be 2,200 square feet, and, let's see, building G, the amenity building, I'm sorry, that's written so small, I can't read it.
You can't read it. You want to see it?
It's a secret. But in terms of the final, that should say the square footage, as building C is 2,400 square feet of retail, which would be the renovated Sage house. And I do believe, and I do, would demand that there be specificity as to the level of improvements that will be in those two houses. I think that's critical. And I think you tie that to the ability to get a tax assessment relief. It has to go hand in hand.
Well, I would agree with you. I would not agree with Alan that number two is anywhere close to specific enough. It's ambiguous, it's vague, it means absolutely nothing.
Yeah. You're talking about on the blue paper?
Number two, sure.
You're right. Yeah, that needs to be absolutely more specific.
Alan, you mentioned earlier that there was protections for those three buildings on the historic registry. Where's the protection for the other three? What happened is they don't allow the other three to come off. I think that's a valid point when we're talking about a site that has six historic structures on it.
And I'm not prepared to answer that, but I have someone here I think that can.
That'd be great. I think it's a pretty important, we may be putting the cart before the horse, because if those can't be removed, well, why are we not incorporating?
Want to take that on?
Who's the somebody? And what's your expertise?
Why three and not six is the question, right?
Who's the somebody, and what's the expertise?
Well, there's several people that can deal with it.
It's a great question. It's a really important question, and in fact, when we were all last at the site, we took another look at those structures, not on the interior, but we did look at them pretty carefully on the exterior. They are small outbuildings, basically. One may be a summer kitchen for one of the houses. That's to be determined. I think probably you, I don't know how the state Historic Preservation Office would look at this. That would be ultimately their call. I would personally love to see them reused somehow or moved.
Well, that was right. If they're that little, it might be easy to move them.
But, yeah, exactly. But compared to the three larger house structures, they're really, relatively speaking, insignificant and contribute in a very accessory way. I think they're kind of caught within the boundary of the district. But happy to look into that with Claire Frisby a little bit more to answer that question a little bit better. The stable is probably the one building that I regret seeing coming down. That's the Brainerd house stable. I think that's a really nice building. It's been completely gutted on the interior. We planted the seeds that maybe that could be relocated as well and used instead of building D brought up to the street. I don't know if the developer is open to that. We haven't had any discussions with the developer, but we're happy to plant the seeds. But in terms of state protections, there's a lot of debate about really whether the state or the town or the federal government can really save these structures. I personally believe that, no, that there is not really teeth that would allow us to say, that those structures have to be maintained and protected as is. But that's kind of an open question, and that's subject to litigation ultimately.
Right. That's where I wanted to find out. For example, if they want, if they won't allow those structures to come off the list, that could be a GameStopper here, and we should know that. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Oh.
So, and I think it's a pretty valid question. If those become a major problem, we should know about it now. So I think that would obviously be one of, if you're taking notes, that would be one of the questions.
Yeah, it's a good question, and that would be discussion with the State Historic Preservation Office. But my sense is from past experience and that it's probably not a deal killer.
It's a state agency. It may take a while.
For sure.
But let's look at the fundamental picture here. This was never about historic preservation.
Right.
This is about development.
Right.
And, come on, Ben.
Well, I don't know if that's true. I mean, let's, let's be honest.
It's, I think it's both.
I think we need to be honest about that.
And there's nothing wrong with that. I think it's both.
Anybody want to read it? This instruction and all the efforts that all of these folks put into it says, this is not about historic preservation. It is about economic development, community development in Portland, and those particular structures have incredible importance and value to this larger picture of development. My answer to your question about six would be, in that light, trying to make this a viable economic development project, you're going to sacrifice something, and you're going to compromise. And without a proponent, here's the answer to your question. If no one steps in and says, you can't take this Cook's house down, now you've got an issue, and it's up to the state preservation office to come in and say, blow the whistle and say you can't do it. Now, if anyone wants to do that and say, well, you got these three small buildings, they'll either have to be worked around or, and spoil this entire project. And no one here is willing to do that.
No. My point was, we should just know the basics. That was, I didn't, I'm not, I didn't go down the road, how to stop it, or, you know, I just want to know if it is going to be a problem, or if the state's going to drag their feet for two years taking this off the registry, we should know this.
Isn't that just run in parallel, though? Isn't the whole point come to some sort of language that we all agree on, so we can move this project forward and not fall into paralysis by overanalysis?
No, I disagree. First of all, it would be the Board of Selectmen, not all of us. We'd decide whether the tax pay, you guys, as the economic development, have an important role, you've done your jobs well. The Board of Selectmen have a separate hat to wear, and they have to look at other details, not just from an economic development standpoint. They have to know everything, what are the ramifications to the town, what's the traffic flow, all things have to be considered. So your input is wonderful, and I don't have any issue with that, but at the end of the day, the Board of Selectmen has to be the body to decide this.
Please, Kitch.
I'm going to stick on the historic preservation piece, only because I'm wondering, do any of you have experience on pulling and taking something down or wanting to take something down, and what generally happens? I mean, there must be some precedent for what generally happens if you're going to demolish three structures, although they may have no significance.
You demolish them and ask for forgiveness.
Well, I would interject.
I'll remember that.
Kitch, we have an ordinance in town, and if, is it 75 years, Claire?
Yes, it's over 75 years.
Any building, if it's over 75 years.
The historical society pays for the right to review any demolitions that are going to take place on buildings over 75 years.
And we have...
And there's a 90-day, we can impose a 90-day delay, which gives us time to do documentation if we choose to do it, to discuss with the owner whether there's options, that sort of thing. We don't have the power to stop the demolition, but we have the power to delay it long enough to figure out whether there are better options.
Okay.
Is I going to, just one thing to kind of add on to what Brian I think was about to say before he stopped. With regards to the three homes and the renovations, most of the people that I talked to that are in favor of the project don't know, especially if they're newer residents to town like I am, I'm only 19, 20 years here, they don't know much about the homes there. So their interest isn't developing the property. They want some business there. They want some things going on. There's less interest in the homes. They don't really know much about them, from what I've experienced. If you're someone that's been in town for a long time, maybe you have a more of a working knowledge of it and the whole bit, but that's where I see a division. So it's the renovations, I think they're important. I think they're, you know, we're saving some history of Portland as well. But again, the interest that I find from people in town are getting the place developed, you know, getting some business there, you know, turning it something that's productive for the town.
Since you're attributing that to me, that's not actually what I was going to say. I was going to say the opposite. I think that the vast majority of people in this room who were in support of this project, I think the main reason is to preserve the homes.
So that's what I would disagree with, yeah. I think it's the opposite.
No, I'm just saying that because we're suggesting that was my call process.
No, I thought you were going to say that.
I don't know that it's relevant to any of this.
Well, I...
I would ask, though, that as policymakers, whether anyone else here struggles with this idea that essentially what we're suggesting is that we are going to reward someone who has allowed this property to deteriorate?
If I...
Can I make a comment? So I guess I don't get that at all. We have someone who's going to invest $30 million into the property. The town is going to get more than they were getting before. How is that rewarding them? It's not that the town is giving them money, the town is just not going to get as much on a development if he had put the money in and developed it.
Well, what I would say is that if I owned a piece of property here and I didn't want to put the money into it to fix it, I wouldn't do it, and I would wait for the town, because that's our policy, to say, you know what, I'm going to allow you to fix that, and I'm not going to have you pay taxes on it.
And it takes $30 million. $30 million. This is not a house that's not getting renovated.
The principle is the same.
Yeah, I mean, it's, if we want to talk academically, that's fine. You have a place that's falling apart, you know, as we speak, little by little each day. It's not an academic exercise.
Who's responsible for that? The owner of the property or the taxpayers of the town?
But the taxpayers aren't funding it. The taxpayers are not going to fund it. They're not taking money.
There has not been a financial impact study done.
It's going to be more money to the town, not less money. So how are you saying that they are funding it when there's more money coming in, not less?
Because this is America, and people essentially are supposed to be treated equally. And what we're doing is we're giving this multimillionaire a heads up over everyone else, but at the same time, we're foreclosing on other people's homes. I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
Brian, your comments are noted. Thank you. Thank you.
And if I, at the end of the day, it has nothing to do with that you're getting more money. It has to do with how much of that money you're spending. If you're getting a million dollars in revenue and you're spending a million too, I don't want more money. So they do go hand in hand. When you're talking about...
Where is that? How is it that the town of Portland is going to spend more money that it's going to be getting in?
We have 24, this is essentially a heavy residential proposal. It has approximately $24 million in residential money. It has approximately $7 million if everything goes right. Call it three and a half, because he's only required to do half, according to planning and zoning. Three and a half million would be what he's actually required to put in, and 24 million of that will be residential money. And out of the residential money, you then have to figure out, all right, what's it going to cost you? There's, everybody puts up these numbers and said, the average child, Jim's a perfect example, the average child costs, you know, I think you use the number 11 or so thousand per year, but there are certain children that end up costing more, and there are certain things that end up costing more. You can't just say, without a doubt, there's going to be no burden to the town. I'll give you an example. You know, I talked to a lot of the volunteer firemen. Our volunteer fire department does about 1,200 calls a year and is close to the brink. That's what they say already. And if this increases the calls, there's a chance that we have to go pay. That is a big number. I don't have that number. We could all speculate maybe equal to the PD, but regardless...
It increases the number of volunteers, though.
Where are we going? Where are we going here?
He said, I just wanted to point out when he said, you get more money, and that's a good thing. I want to make sure everybody's fully aware, it's not what you get, it's what you keep.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments, if I could squeeze in.
Please, Greg.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. One is, in terms of the historic buildings, I see some potential there. I kind of agree. I thought about this often, and I said, you know, what those buildings, once they're renovated, will do, will become a marketing tool. In other words, it separates Portland... In other words, it separates Portland, Portland all of a sudden, this project is separated from almost all of the projects of that kind of development. They have a uniqueness. And through marketing, property, proper marketing, I think it's going to enhance the value and maybe get some more commercial, commercial type development in those spaces that we have. The second thing, I, I know Ben and I have gone around and around on this, but facts, as I said before, are stubborn. We, we can, you can look at them, but they're facts are facts. And I'm not talking about alternative facts. Facts are facts. And we might want to change them and we might want to look at them in a different light, but they're, they're still facts. And there's three things. Birth rate. We'll start with birth rate. Seems like I can come up with a line on that one. Birth rates in the town has fallen. It's, you look at ten years and it's down despite the efforts of a couple of our selectmen. The birth rate is, the birth rate is going down and it's really at its lowest point, except for one year. School enrollment, same thing. School enrollment going down. And, and I know you aren't a board and you probably recall the figures were going on. In the last ten years, maybe one of those years, it went up a little bit. And it's, I believe it's in an all-time low for the past ten years. And, you know, so, so those figures, when we throw them out, don't fly in the face of reality as far as I'm concerned. I'm looking at figures and I'm seeing declining, ascending. And I think the school system, if they were to pick up a few more children, probably could handle it. It might be a good thing. And I don't see it as a cost. So, we can talk about what might happen, but this is the only, the only project we have is the one before us. And I'm looking at budget too. You're going to be looking, we're all going to be looking at budgets. We're going to be looking for ways to enhance the budget without raising taxes. Nobody wants to raise taxes. I don't see any hands going up, "I want to pay more taxes." This is a shot. Not a perfect plan. I don't love it. And I'd like to make some changes. Everybody in this room would like to see some different things, but it's all we got. And we're going to have declining, probably state revenue. We're going to be looking for every buck. And this project will give us some additional revenue. Not great, but I, I think it, in the town's interest, in that way, you know, I support it.
Yeah. Let me just chime in here again on the historic properties bit. Not only did we go to the trouble to town-wide produce a VCI report that basically is the plan that we're looking at here. I mean, the fundamental elements of this entire development are pretty well sketched out in, in the context of, of that study. And everybody participated and it was accepted. The next step of that was a conservation and development plan. That's supposed, is supposed to provide the guidance for us for the next ten years. And the first two elements of that plan are strengthen the town's center, promote appropriate development, redevelopment of Elmcrest. And inside, it talks about the utilization of the historic properties to enhance both of those, both of those issues. It is not about preservation. It is about economic development. It's been codified here, codified here. Everyone's had a chance to speak to it. And it has been ratified, in every case, by planning and zoning commission, by the board of selectmen, by EDC, and essentially by the general public. To the other point about birth rates, if you look at the numbers that are in your packet here, it tells you what the, what the population of Portland has done in the last twenty years. We've gained five hundred and sixty-eight people in twenty years. I don't know what the math is. I'm going to say it's about twenty-five people a year. Where did they go? Where, how, where, where are they? You know where they are? They're in suburban housing developments that suck up the green space, the countryside of this town. And we all know that there's no money in that for this town. The cost of servicing a private home out in Middle Hattem Road where I am doesn't even begin to compare with the benefits of having an increase in this population here that are consumers, participants, and virtually no cost to this town. Virtually no cost. I'm not saying none, but that's been argued and argued and argued. We've been through, how many children are going to come into the school system? We've been arguing about what's going to do to the police and the fire. That has all been dealt with. I don't think that this is the, the appropriate iteration, if I can go back to that term, to be, what are we doing here? Let's go through this list and say, add something to it, perfect it a little bit, and stop quibbling about the, the nonsense that's history. It's just history and it's, it's embarrassing. It's absolutely embarrassing.
See, I, I would disagree.
Well, I'm sorry you do.
Respectfully, and I'll tell you.
I'm going to move on to number three. This speaks to, I'm going to call it a guarantee, that there will be two phases of the project. They have to be completed within time frames, four years apiece. It speaks specifically to when those time frames begin. And this is all in an attempt to satisfy this board as to protections to this town on delivery of the promised development. Does anyone want to add something to that? Subtract something from that? Speak to it.
Why does it say eight years in the first line?
Because it's two phases. Phase one, four years. Phase two, four years.
Our tax, our tax.
Total, eight years.
Our tax payment policy currently only allows seven. Seven, when it starts, right? That's not the answer.
When does the abatement start?
Whenever we say it does.
No, it says right here.
It's our abatement, we can say whenever it starts.
What does this say? When does the abatement, in this proposal, what does it say?
It doesn't have a start date. It has a start, it has a timeframe of the spring of seventeen, but it doesn't have a date. What I'm getting at is, so is it seven years from the date we signed it?
Phase one start date, will start from the date of the signing of the fixed assessment agreement.
So then why is there eight years? Back to eight years. If our policy only allows seven years.
Because.
And it starts from the start date when you sign the document.
No.
And we're only allowed to do seven years, why is it say eight years?
No.
What's that, Tom?
Tom, Robinson?
That's a different answer than I'm getting and that's, that, that makes sense.
But we think it's CO that's seven years. And once we know everything combined, we know all the costs. So periodically over the four years, right? Every year, they, they're making improvements for tax, they're making improvements for tax, they're making improvements tax. Year four, come through the first phase, let's say it's complete, needs to be complete. Then you set the seven years and it starts ticking.
Right, but that's not what they're saying up here.
That's what it is.
Well, let's perfect it. Let's perfect it.
I, first of all.
Does everybody understand?
Thank you. That's being.
Do Tom clarify that for you, Ben?
He did, but that's not what was set up here. Do we have a pending application for this? Do you have a copy of that, the pending?
Yeah, it's in your packet.
You got it.
Because that's what we should be.
A white sheet.
We should be discussing a pending application and to see whether it meets our, our policy or not.
If you look on the back page, applicant requests under description of fixed assessment agreement saw applicant requests a seven-year deferral of assessment increase. And it would be on the improvements, not the land, as we noted earlier. To begin with the issuance of certificate of occupancy. And the phases are associated with the agreement in terms of what has to be completed. And if it's not completed and if X, Y, and Z, which is identified, is not completed within four years, then the abatement doesn't.
Right.
Doesn't exist. It won't work. It's, it's invalid. Right.
The whole agreement is terminated if these, if benchmarks are not made in the first four years. Is that correct?
That's what I would understand.
Yes, that's what, that's what we would expect to see in the, in the final agreement.
Right. That's what would have to be legally written.
Well, then why does it say phase two will be completed within eight years of the execution of the tax payment agreement? It's a year longer than our tax policy. And then it also says this goes into effect when signing. So we now give him a one-year grace period to maybe complete phase two, maybe not? So then he still gets phase one at a hundred percent?
For example, Ben, if, let's say, phase one does take the full four years. You're in year four and you get the certificate of occupancy, let's say, just for argument's sake, and they all get CO'd on the same day. So from that day in year four of the, of the phase, the seven year starts.
No, it's a total of a seven-year tax abatement. First four years, a hundred percent, correct?
That is not the way it works.
No.
You have to wait until the certificate of occupancy. Tom, do you want to explain it a little bit?
This, this doesn't say CO. And that's, first of all, we have to go by what our tax payment policy says. Our tax payment policy currently allows us to have up to a seven-year tax abatement. This does not say, it says years one to four, one hundred percent. So what is year one? I'm reading this, it's a seven-year, it's a proposal, he has an eight year in front of us. It says years one to four is a hundred percent deferral, Tom. What year, where is what year one to four?
So this is my understanding of what this would work. So you have eight, the gentleman has eight years to complete it, within a four-year window to complete phase one. So as a phase one gets completed, he's going to have seven years from that phase. So, so say four years in, boom, seven years.
Then the first, the seven year starts after the first four years?
Yeah, because the first four years, we're taxing him. When he's in there, we're taxed, every time he makes an improvement, we're taxing every October first, right? So the, right away, the, right away, right away, once you approve this and then approve the, the, we go to the next phase, we, the land value goes up, automatically that goes in. So based on X amount of how apartments, space, square footage, ba, 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 that's now taxed, boom. So now that starts, land starts taxed higher. Then he's got four years to do the first phase, which was shut down further from when his initial, you want a ten or twelve or something. So that was, so now, assuming, let's say he gets done in year three. So year three, so the year, so the first, first year on October first, we're going to tax him. The second year on October first, we're going to tax him. The third year on first, we're going to overtax him.
Only on the land at this point?
No, the, well, first, first is the land and then on the improvements.
It's called the interim improvement?
It's called interim improvement. So the assessor will approve. So you tax, tax, tax. Once it gets the COs approved, then the next October first, right, it starts, there's seven years. And then he's got, then he would have four more years to do the remainder and then he would do seven years. So it's seven years from when the CO is issued.
Twenty-two years.
So it'd be about fifteen years, if, if, at the most.
Four plus seven, plus the second phase of four plus another seven.
First four, he doesn't have them.
Twenty. It'll overlap. Right, so it'll be four and then seven and then four. It should be fifteen. But you're getting, but you're getting taxes, you're getting taxes for the four, first four years, the first three to four years that you weren't getting.
How do the taxes work, Tom? And I, I don't know the answer. So there's some sort of improvement that, I don't know, you put up the, the first floor or something. But what, what in reality is the tax? I, I assume it's not anything significant.
It's whatever the assessor determines the tax to be based upon what's available to review. It can be quite decent increase. So because what they're, you know, they, they understand there's going to be a tax for that three year. What they're looking for is that when they, when they, when it, when it's CO'd, they want that. While they're getting their people in, right, renting, they want a tax abatement for that three-year period to be able to pay down what they discovered. And then that's what they're looking for.
All right. Well, either way, back, back to what our policy allows us to do and back to what this says. This says.
You're not going over, you're not going over seven years, bro. It's, it's.
Seven years from this, when the CO is.
It's, the project is eight years. We complete four things, it's eight years.
Right, but that's, I just heard a whole different, you just went up to fifteen years.
It's two phases.
The CO is issued per building as it's completed.
Two COs.
All right, let's go through what's in front of us. Years one to four, after there's a CO of anything on that project, that's when this abatement starts. Once we have a CO of any building, we're calling that years one to four. We all agree?
Right.
On that building?
No. On that phase one.
No, on that building.
No, on that building. Well, then, then that's ridiculous. We're going to be playing building by building? This is a project?
Yes.
We are, we are saying, within, within years one to four, we're giving you a hundred percent, but you need to complete one to four in that four. The clock doesn't start every building, every CO. Once he starts the project and it gets a building CO, that's when this time changes.
Ben, I think the overall project is eight years, right? So if he finishes this building, the CO is issued, seven years in that tax abatement. He finishes that the next year, the CO is issued, seven years of tax abatement.
So how is this any better than the first one?
So it phases out over time, because the rates are drastically reduced from the first time, I think, right?
They're not dr, no. I'm going to use a little drastic, from, from a hundred percent down to ninety-five. That's not drastic, down to eighty-five.
And it, and it phases out, right? Because it's got to give them the ability to go and fill that property to make it a good business. And in, in, in the interim, we're getting increased taxes, plus all the application fees that come along with it. Which if you looked at the estimated fees, they're very substantial.
Did you look at the estimated cost of those same fees?
I did.
Yeah, so this next.
Yeah, car tax, personal property tax.
In the planning and zoning department, to be fair to the residents of Portland, it's not a moneymaker. It's supposed to be a break even. So in other words, when the planning and zoning department collects a fee for an application and they're charging you two hundred and twenty-five dollars or whatever, it's supposed to cost about two twenty-four. It's not there to create revenue. It's there, you get what you pay for. So if we're collecting these application fees, we have to be honest with the public. Stop considering that revenue. There's a cost associated with that.
I think that we also have to be honest that there's no freebies. We're not, as a taxpayer, I'm not giving Dan Bertrane anything, right? What he's giving me is a thirty million dollar investment in my town for myself and my family to enjoy for the rest of our lives as we've, that we live here. I think that there, there's misinformation. When we say that it's freebies, that's just not the case.
No, but it's not mis. Well, I wouldn't use misinformation. I would, what I would say is, commercial and industrial tax payments are typically wonderful for the community, especially if you're now putting out another business. Residential tax payments, if we're going to get in the business of giving them out, we might as well do it to everybody. I see a lot of faces in this room that have been here longer than me. I've been here forty, forty-plus years. It's a wonderful town. The reality is, we don't give out residential tax, tax payments. Some people want to call this a mixed-use development.
It's commercial.
When it's three-quarters residential, let's call a spade a spade. This is a heavy residential development with a little bit of commercial. It has twenty-four million dollars worth of residential and it has seven million worth of commercial, which is only required to do three and a half million out of the center. So at the end of the day, this is not a moneymaker.
I, I just don't see that, Ben.
No, I respect that, but I disagree. And Al, when, back to, earlier you mentioned the, the VCI report. One of the big highlights in that VCI report, and you know, you used the statement that, you know, this was.
The bathroom.
The path we used. In the VCI report, it was very specific, it was either page thirteen or seventeen. It says, "Portland residents don't want dense housing."
It's number twenty-two on the list, twenty-five.
It's still, it made, it made the book. The point is.
I wrote the book. I know what you're talking about. That is not, Ben, it's, the housing component is commercial. It's no different than a hotel or anything else. We're not talking about individual homes or residence.
Oh, that's, oh, that's great.
It's a commercial property.
So they can't go to school?
It has single owner.
It's a hotel, so they can't go to school, folks. Everybody that's going to be staying in these apartments will not burden. Studios can have two children in them. You can have a one-bedroom, a single mother with two girls or a single father with two boys. You don't have the right to discriminate. These are facts. But at the end of the day, we can all sit here and, you know.
Ben, we're going to go back to your issue about phase one, phase two, seven years, eight years, and correct that. So when you see a final agreement, you'll approve. It'll be precisely what you would wish to see. And that is, it will not be in excess of seven years.
Right. I would not, first of all, our policy won't let us and we should.
And the project won't be more than eight years long in its conclusion. Would that be satisfactory?
Seven years per building? No, absolutely not. Absolutely not. It cannot be seven years per building. You could be fifteen years out.
But they phase in and out. It doesn't matter. It's not going to be.
It's whether the whole project is a benefit to this community or not. If you phase it in over fifteen years, we can't even discuss what the burdens are going to be fifteen years out. It's, our policy allows us to go to seven years from the start of that signature on that abatement. And our policy also doesn't allow us to have transfer. In this new application, they want the ability to transfer. We don't even know who we're getting in bed with. When you, our po, first of all, so everybody's clear, our policy does not allow transferring. It voids a tax abatement in the town of Portland. We now have language in this application that they want the ability to, to. We now have language in this application that they want the ability to market this. To who? Carabetas? Who's going to buy this? Who are we, who are we giving a tax abatement to? When you give out a tax abatement, you better know who's getting it, you better know what they're building, and you better know what it will do to your community. And I want everybody to realize that. I want this development more than anyone. I love the historic nature of it. Well, you can laugh all you want, but I will tell you, you got to get it right. When you shake your head, just because, and I respect your opinion, but at the end of the day, you need to be able to prove what this is going to cost the community and we don't know that. And when you're talking about now, and we're just learning it tonight because we weren't part of these negotiations, it wasn't brought back to us after the negotiations, we're now learning this could go on for fifteen years. Did anybody up here know that?
Which is a shame.
This is a negotiation.
That should have been known at the last meeting. We should have done our due diligence before Dan Bertram gave me your last time and known what a tax abatement or a deferral was. It's unacceptable that we're just learning that right now.
We got the email after.
What we're dealing with tonight is what we thought you would agree was a negotiated proposal. That's what it says. It's a draft, proposed tax abatement.
Back to that. Alwin, so you believe it's a seven-year tax abatement? I just want to make sure we're at least dealing with, okay, so it's not a sliding seven years, it's a start.
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by sliding.
Is, does the seven years start once every building is CO'd? Or does the seven years start when you have an entire project where you want somebody to invest in your community, you start the clock ticking from day one? No, I'm asking.
I know you're asking. I'm not sure I can answer it. Let me ask my colleague.
I believe the way that it's set up is, as each building gets its CO, that building is complete and that it has the seven-year tax abatement on that, on that building that's got that final CO.
Okay, so it's safe to say this abatement is ten times worse than the original abatement?
That's, no, no, just a minute, just a minute.
It is.
No.
Don't say, no, I'll walk you through it. Finish, no, no.
It is the same as it was before. The issue, and the issue is the same for the other tax abatements. The tax abatement starts, and this is the way the law is set up. It's not germane to this project only. It starts when the building certificate of occupancy is issued. That's the way it's set up.
To provision.
Well, it really starts when the board agrees that it starts. We have to keep in mind that this is an incentive. He's able to develop this project in any way that he wants, right?
I just think traditionally, in these agreements, it's not something we're inventing here. It's the certificate of, can I finish? It's the certificate of occupancy that starts the clock for an abatement. It has to be a building that's occupied, that's finished. That's the issue.
Well, it doesn't have to be. I mean, that may make sense, but it doesn't have to be. It's up to the town to give whatever deal they want to give to a developer if the town thinks it's appropriate for this development. If that's what we want, then you incentivize it. If it's not something you want, you wouldn't incentivize it. And you incentivize it however you want. I mean, why would, why would we defer to what other people do or what some other policy is in another town?
Well, unfortunately, Bruce Chudwick couldn't be here tonight, as I explained to you. He could, go ahead.
I don't, I don't know that I really care about what Bruce Chudwick says as it relates to that. I mean, this is policy that we're creating for the town.
It's a policy that is allowed under Connecticut general statutes. So we have to follow Connecticut general statutes. That's my point, is that Bruce Chudwick, as our attorney that puts together the agreement, has to make sure that it meets the legal law that the state of Connecticut allows us to operate on.
It allows, it allows one hundred percent over seven years. We can certainly do less. That's our policy, that's the statute.
Well, I think what would be more constructive is, you've all had this draft for more than an hour. It would have been nice if you had, with your concerns, had brought to us an alternative with some clearer language that we could all appreciate and work with and come up with some resolution. I get your point. I'm not arguing that. I'd still like to move ahead and see if we can't come to.
My, my, my only thing that I want to point out, Alwin, and well put, is we're dealing with two things in front of us now. We have a pending application in front of us, which we need to vote on. And you're doing the right thing and I appreciate that. You're trying to figure out, back on the policy side of it, on the draft. We're talking about a draft when we have an application pending. We have a situation here where there is a pending application that needs to be voted on and you're, you're doing the right thing. And you're doing what should have happened a month ago, when the Board of Selectmen should have been part of what's going on, put in the emails as far.
It's too bad you didn't participate when you were invited.
And there's a reason I wouldn't go.
Two or three times I asked you to help me.
And I said it to you before and I'll say it again, the reason I don't believe this.
And you didn't want to help me.
If you mind, I'll say it so everybody's clear. The reason I don't want to get involved with the negotiations is, when you have pending applications in front of planning and zoning, you have pending applications for tax abatements, this board shouldn't be going down to meet him, shouldn't be going down to any of that. When you have things going on, you should be looking at it, how do you protect the residents of Portland and have the best deal that is going to benefit this community as a whole? And I think that's very important. And I think everybody needs to know that when we gave you the power to negotiate a deal, it was to return to us so we would have input. And I can't say that enough.
And that's what we're doing tonight.
Well, it's too late when we have a pending application, Alwin, you're a hundred percent right. But it's too late when you have a pending application.
Why is it too late?
Are we going to change the pending application? So, for example, on this draft, and you're asking great questions and you want good input, and you're a hundred percent right. But what good is it when we have a pending application that says what he is ultimately wants and he expects to get a vote on? That's where I'm stuck right now. You're doing the right thing, but we're, we're too late when there's a pending application, in my opinion.
He has to sign an agreement, a tax abatement agreement, that we're asking all of you to help us construct the fabric of that agreement to your satisfaction, that he would have to sign.
If I make.
And wouldn't that bind him to that outcome? I don't see where the application is.
I'll have one sentence and then you can go, Brian. The problem is, the door is open and we need to be careful what we're talking about when we're, he has a pending application.
Yeah.
What you're doing is a hundred percent right if there wasn't a pending application. Right now, almost all of this needs to end and we need to deal with the pending application as presented. Or, if you guys have any pull, have the pending application withdrawn. We then have the dialogue to figure out what the input should be, figure out where we need to be.